I'd like to call the Finance and Law Subcommittee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, September 4th. Mr. Souza.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Also in attendance, we have the Superintendent Cabral and the Assistant Superintendent Monahan. First item on the agenda this evening is, finally, we have some student requests, activity requests. Hope World School is looking to replenish its student activity account in the amount of $416.07.
I see nothing out of order. I move we replenish the accounts as requested.
I agree. But second.
Motion's been made second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. And we're finally down to one bill's payable.
For this fiscal year?
Which means the encumbrance list is kinda, almost done. Very good.
Encumbrance is almost done. We officially closed it, and hopefully, we should be working on a spreadsheet of all the encumbrances, but it looks about $95,000 right now.
And it'll be dribs and drabs.
Correct.
All right. So we have bills payable for FY '20 in the amount of $790,000... 90...yeah, try again.[66.34][66.34]$790,782.52.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Souza.
Thank you. Ms. Monahan, page one, "Accept Education." That was one I haven't...I don't remember it, anyway. And it's coming out of the regular budget, which is...
It is considered one of the 9100, which is the line item of 9100, which is considered to be our out-of-district tuition. So it is one of our...one student for our out-of-district.
But it's not coming out of the special ed budget, though.
It is.
It is.
You think you're confusing circuit breaker? It's not coming out of the circuit breaker. It's coming out of the appropriation.
Of 9100, which is...
9100 is special ed.
Out-of-district.
Out-of-district.
Okay. Oh, the other...okay, out-of-district budget. Okay, and how many students?
One student.
Is that just one month?
One student, one month of the month of July.
Where's that located?
I am not sure, but I could look that up for you and get back to you.
At your convenience.
Sure.
Thank you.
I noticed in Massachusetts, that's...
What's that?
I noticed in Massachusetts, that's encouraging.
Yeah, that's close. Appreciate that.
Well, we used to, years ago, have some really huge ones down in Texas.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for the good of the order?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval on the bills payable in the amount of $790,782.52.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made in second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
If I could answer Mr. Souza's question.
Sure, you can.
Native, thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item on the agenda this evening is a facilities update.
See, we actually added that now as a...
Well, you know we're gonna ask.
That's right. So just a quick one. The Friedman floor project is complete. Students are actively on the floor in gym and playing basketball and all. And so the only thing that's left will be the bleachers, which will be installed September 10th, and it'll take about two to three days.
Very good.
That won't hold up, Mr. Chairman, through you? That won't hold up any school activities?
No, it will not. They've been well aware of everything, and so they've been accommodating us because the floor looks absolutely beautiful.
The pictures look great. I can't wait to get over this sometime this week and next to look at it.
And Mokee, I went to the construction meeting today. Things are bustling very quickly over there, and we are hoping to continue on at progress. And we are, right now, right on time and on schedule.
And I think we have a school building committee meeting on the 17th?
Coming up in two weeks, please. Yes, and it'll be at Friedman Middle School.
Friedman.
And, Mr. Chairman, through you, I have two other questions.
Yes, Mr. Souza.
Thank you. The Bennett Playground.
Bennett Playground, the status of the Bennett Playground is, there were some pieces of equipment that came, arrived on-site, that were broken. So they had to go ahead and reorder the pieces. We are hoping to receive them. Of course, they were on back order. We're hoping to receive them within the next week or so, and then soon thereafter, it would just take days to finish. So it is taking a little bit longer, but of course, it was beyond our control with some defective pieces.
Can we FedEx them in and things like that?
Well, I have tried. Believe me, I have been contacting people, but when things are on back order, I cannot do anything more.
They have to make them fresh.
That is right. So you can only push so much.
Exactly.
FedEx does it instantly. It's getting it to FedEx is the problem.
That's right.
There you go.
Can't ship an empty box.
And that was a state bid, right?
Yes, that one was.
So we didn't have any conditions for bidding that required them to get it done by a certain time?
Right, no.
Okay.
But that seems to be reasonable.
That's...
And I know it's on the regular meeting about the Letty Playground. Do we want to hold off and just discuss it at the regular meeting, or do you have anything you want to talk about? Any additional...I mean, I was kind of taken aback by the price, to be honest with you, but I'm assuming with all the ADA and all of the issues that are now required by statute, that the price is according?
Well, the biggest part, and if that's okay to discuss it now...
You asked the question.
Yes, okay. So what happens is, the structure itself is expensive, but the most expensive piece of it is the poured rubber. So as you can see in the memo, there's a little picture of it in there, in the memo there, and you will see that there's two ways that we have the bid that came through. The first quote that we received was, it was part pour-in-place, and the other part were that type of a wood chip. And so as you can see, it looks...the blue is the pour-in-place. And so for that less expensive price, you will see it strips in a round. To be fully ADA compliant, which we mean fully meaning the entire area, no paths around for the pour-in-place, that would be the additional $45,000. So the actual pricing, and I didn't have it here.
So 62...right here.
Thank you very much.
62.7.
So 62.7 would be for the amount of money for it being partially...I don't want to say partially ADA, because we are ADA compliant, but to have it fully, the full playground with pour-in-place, it would be an additional $45,000, which would bring the structure and pour-in-place to 107.7. And so I did, I did look at the Letty revolving and all, and the Letty revolving account, currently, we have, in the revolving account, we have $41,872. So this isn't our only playground this year. So as we get...we're seeing that the structure itself, they're pretty consistent. It is, unfortunately, the pour-in-place where is the big ticket.
Andalava.
Andalava, of course, yes.
Yeah.
Of course.
Like she doing it, everything's on site.
So for 62.7, an ADA compliant, that's a combination of wood fiber and poured rubber that provides pathways or a path to access to the structure.
Got you.
It doesn't sound too out of whack, because I've been gone for several years, 13 to be exact, and playgrounds back then would cost anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000.
Right.
Now it's just with wood fiber.
Yeah, yeah. So, and I'm sure the ADA pieces increase costs even more.
Well, thank you for the explanation. I think that's important to understand the exact scope of the project or the possible additional scope of the project. Thank you. Do we...Mr. Chairman, did we...we've already...to the superintendent, through you, to the superintendent, will you approve the money for this?
No.
This was...this is the FYI, right?
Yeah, we were asked to investigate. I believe Mrs. Almeida made the motion and asked the administration to investigate what the cost would be. And as the memo states, Mrs. Belanger, working with Mrs. Monahan and Taylor Torres, completed a...submitted a grant, whether we were hoping that would have been funded last year. However, it wasn't funded, but we still have the plans and the cost is still good, so...
Cost is still good, and the grant, you know, we still got it...it didn't get approved. So we can do what we want to do for 62.7, is basically.
Correct. Mrs. Belanger, and I spoke with Mrs. Belanger that night, our last school committee meeting, and she was ecstatic to hear the possibility of a new playground, and she would be very satisfied, very happy with the 62.7 version of the playground.
Donna DeCoppo's all set, too?
I'm sorry?
Donna DeCoppo's all set, too?
Yes. Mrs. DeCoppo has worked with Mrs. Monahan and Dr. Belanger when designing our playgrounds.
And the whole thing. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
And just another, just a point as well, is that this quote that we received is also on the state bid list. So it is the same thing as we did before. So there's, there's nothing that we really need to go out to bid.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made in second. All is in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Meeting called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, liberty, and justice for all.
(Singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
If we could remain standing for a moment of silence. Taunton lost a valued employee over the past week. Daniel, who's better known as Teddy Roderick, passed away suddenly last week. He was a longtime crossing guide here in the city of Taunton. I know he also worked as a security officer at Taunton High School. He's a longtime employee at Morton Hospital as well. But certainly, our thoughts and prayers go out to his wife Patty, his brothers Paul and Bob. So we could keep the Roderick family in our prayers here this evening. Mrs. Almeida, would you be so kind as to take roll call?
Mrs. Doherty.
Present.
Mr. Souza.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mrs. Almeida's present. Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mr. Demello.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan.
Present.
Mr. Chairman.
Present.
Mr. Mann.
Present. Approval of the minutes from August 21st, 2019.
Vote approval.
Second. Motion made in second. If further discussion, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Yes, Mrs. Fagan.
I'd like to be recorded as present. I wasn't at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Student Council Representative Report. I'd like to welcome Lizzie Darcy and Paige Tolan, both seniors and members of the Student Council. Here with us this evening is both their first times here. Don't be nervous. We're excited to have you, and the floor is yours to give us your Student Council report.
So our biggest goal this year was to really involve the eighth graders. So instead of having one eighth grade orientation, we decided to split it up into three middle schools. The Martin, Friedman, and Parker all came on separate days. And we also, this year, tried out, we had a freshman from each one of those grades speak to those eighth graders and have that personal connection, saying like, "We were in your spot last year. Don't be nervous. It's okay." And we thought that having a student-to-student talk would be better than just having the principal continue talking and talking to them. We had grab-and-go snacks as they walked into the cafeteria, and we had all the clubs and sports teams there, where you could sign up and meet some of the upperclassmen. We also had some Student Council Representatives show them around with their schedules, because they got their schedules that day. And if any parents had any questions, we were there to answer any of their questions. For the first two days of school, we did something different this year. A group of teachers worked on this all summer, and we did like a little orientation. So we had captains and like presidents of club members go to each eighth grade classroom and some freshman classrooms to talk to them. And if they had any questions for us about lunch, because lunch can be a little scary, or the do's and don'ts of high school, and just any personal question that a teacher couldn't ask and an experienced student could ask, we could answer it for them. And leading off of making a successful transition to the high school for the eighth graders, we're additionally, tomorrow night at 6:00 in the Taunton High Auditorium, we're having another orientation for parents and students, just to get frequently asked questions answered, such as who is an eighth grader's guidance counselor, what are some academic requirements, how to get involved, how to get help, just any questions that parents and students may have. And so also, in addition with eighth graders who may be having a stressful year, seniors as well are, with college applications coming up, it can be a stressful time. So today, at school, dual enrollment at BCC started. There was 43 students who attended, and they go to Bristol Community College during one of the classes, and they can receive college credits for any class that they're there for. Additionally, over the summer, we had a college boot camp where we toured Providence one day, and we really got ahead on the application process. We were allowed to write our essays, do the Common App, sign up Naviance, just a lot, and the teachers really helped us out with that. But if some seniors did miss that, next week, we have another college kickoff at Thursday, on Thursday, September 12th, in the auditorium. And it's also more information for seniors to get more guidance about applying to college. Another really cool thing is that there were 99 students that showed up to the college boot camp this year, and last year, there was about 70. So we did do really good this year with the numbers, and a lot of students got the word out, and we all got the help we needed, like earlier than we could have had it. So this week, we have, Student Council has put on a welcome week, and it's like Spirit Week, but we decided, we started it last year, it was our first year, and we do it like the first week of school to welcome the eighth graders and like the freshmen back and everyone back. And we have fun spirit days, and we started yesterday, and today, we had one. It was Whiteout Wednesday, and everyone participated. It was actually really cool to see even like the eighth graders like go all out in it, so...
That's...your report is complete?
Yes.
Excellent. I just, first of all, I'd like to thank you both. I mean, that, just what you did over the past week, you know, I know it took a lot of work, and that's true leadership, and you should be commended for that. And that's the example that, you know, the tone that we're glad to see you're setting for the rest of the building. So I know, before I go to the committee, I know Mr. Cabral wanted to add...
All of us.
Okay. I saw Mr. Doherty, Mr. Martin, and Mrs. Almeida.
Just, would you say just a little bit more about what you did today during college Welcome/Spirit Week? You mentioned something, but went over that very quickly.
Okay, so I can go over the days for you if you want. So yesterday, we had Tropical Tuesday, and everyone dressed up in Hawaiian, and we had like leis and...
We can stitch it.
And skirts, and some people came in with like flippers and goggles, and it was just a fun way to like, the eighth graders could see how much spirit we had at Taunton High, because they didn't know what we had until we showed that. Today was Whiteout Wednesday, so everyone dressed up in all white clothes, and we dressed up, people had paint on them, they had all that. And then tomorrow is Middle School Colors Day, so all, everyone comes in in their Middle School Colors Day, and then Friday, we end in Black and Orange Day. So we thought that we would go from where you came from, like you came from your middle school, to all coming together as Tigers, and we ended with Black and Orange Day.
Nice. Thank you.
Mr. Mann?
Having two grandchildren attending the eighth grade, it was a great experience for them. They enjoyed it thoroughly. I enjoyed it thoroughly. I wasn't there because of them. I was picking up some upperclassmen, and the grabbing snacks were great, because I did grab in. It was a good experience.
You're a child of the 60s. And Mr. O'Brien was gonna say, "Does he have great-grandchildren or grandchildren?" I said, "That's not even..." I said, "That's not even nice." You whispered it to me. Miss Almeida.
Well, Mr. Martin's grandchildren are great.
Oh, thank you.
Even though they are your grandchildren, but they are wonderful, wonderful children from wonderful parents.
My wife's taping this.
So anyways, I'm glad to see that some of the things that came out of our high school subcommittee with the board, your advisory board, has started to take place, because that's one of the things that the, was very hot topic last year, was to make the eighth graders welcome into the high school. And I'm glad that someone took it by the horns and just went with it, and so they felt good about it.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, great. And so did any of those students sign up for extracurricular activities from that? Or what were some of the concerns?
Some concerns?
Some of the concerns that the eighth graders had?
Clubs and activities.
Like what did, what did they talk about that they didn't already know?
Okay, so we really stress how to get involved. So Student Council ran Welcome Week technically, but along with that, so Lizzie and I actually do morning and afternoon announcements. So we mention a lot of clubs and activities that are starting up again with the new school year. And we really just stress that even though Student Council is running Welcome Week, you can join DECA, you can join a sport, you can join guitar club. There's something for everyone out there who enters the, enters from middle school, and we just really wanted to stress that to them.
And last year, we talked about in the advisory, that it might be a good idea for students to have like a mentor, an upperclassman mentored. Are they assigned that now or not from Student Council?
Not from Student Council, however. I know that for, I'm a part of National Honor Society, and I know that this year, it is a really big concern to have more tutors for students, not only tutors, but also mentors as well, if they need any help.
Great. Thank you very much. It sounds like you girls did a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabral?
I just want to thank the Taunton High School administration, the students. I have an eighth grader who started this year at Taunton High School, and she was very anxious the night before school, but I have to admit that after two days in high school last week, she loves the experience, and she enjoyed the Tropic Tuesday and Whiteout today. And I will say, I was at the high school yesterday, visited all the classrooms, and the spirit was there, and I was, I guess, what I took, my biggest takeaway was seeing the upperclassmen help the underclassmen find the houses and find their classrooms. So that wasn't always the case when I was in high school, so it was nice to see that times have changed. And I also want to mention that I'm very, very proud. It was one of my goals to increase our dual enrollment opportunities, to have Taunton High School students having the college experience off-campus, I think is very important, and hopefully will, I know will, provide students with the opportunity to attend college in the future, because now they have their foot in the door. So great work, great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the report? Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks, ladies. Next on the agenda is public input. We have Vicki Lopes, 5 Biltmore Street, wants to talk about policy for committee members. You take the podium and then just give your name and address for the record, please. You get, you get five minutes, ma'am.
Hi. Vicki Lopes, 5 Biltmore Street. What is the policy for elected school committee members in regards to speaking publicly on personnel matters, please?
We don't answer questions at public input. We just take, take the input.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the evaluation of the superintendent.
Motion to revert from the regular order of business and finish the rest of the agenda, because I think this will take a little more time.
That's fine. Is there a second? Motion made in second. If further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. So we'll go to, next, the superintendent's report.
Just real quick, two items in the superintendent's report regarding the opening of the school year. So once again, we had a very successful convocation day. Last year's theme was "This Is Us." This year's theme was "What's in Your Backpack?" So during convocation day, with the theme again, "What's in Your Backpack?", but before we got to the unpacking of the red backpack, we had a capacity, we were at capacity, the auditorium was filled. Mr. Barata did a great job serving as the emcee. And we also, at that time, we thanked Mayor Hoy for his dedicated service to the Taunton Public Schools. I hope you enjoyed seeing all those different cutouts of yourself through the years. So after we recognized Mayor Hoy for his dedicated service to the students and staff in the Taunton Public Schools, we also thanked Chairman Carl O'Brien with the chair, which I believe Mayor Hoy is trying to get his hands on, so I'll see what I can do as far as you guys sharing the chair. And also, what also, what continues to be a highlight is recognizing the staff who've served 35-year, 35-plus years in Taunton Public Schools. And this year, we recognized four new members, Emery Benedetti, Linda McKenzie, Lisa Penn, and Emery Sukforth, for 35 years of dedicated service in the Taunton Public Schools. So something that I learned during the MASs conference, there was a presentation by Dr. Adolf Brown, in which he discussed how students come to our schools carrying two backpacks. So they have the one backpack that we physically see that contains all the school supplies, and our students also bring with them another backpack that contains all the life experiences that help shape and guide who they are. So during the opening day, I showed some vulnerability, and I unpacked my imaginary backpack and discussed all the experiences that shape who I am as an educator, and all the experiences that will guide me into becoming the superintendent I hope to be in the near future. Also, we talked about Simon Sinek in his book, Start With Your Why. So we talked about educators, we always talk about what we do, but we never really get into the why we do what we do. And then we concluded with a very powerful presentation. It was a video clip that I borrowed from America's Got Talent, the way it was a blind and autistic student named Cody Lee, where he performed, he demonstrated his hidden talent, where he could sing and play the piano, which, to tie it all in, goes back to the 8,000 students that we have in front of us. They all have hidden talents that we, as educators, have to help cultivate and develop. And then afterwards, we concluded with our baseball team being recognized. We had them enter the auditorium, in which they tossed T-shirts into the crowd, and I'm very happy to say, a lot of the T-shirts have been worn throughout the school system. And then we ended with our barbecue lunch in the cafeteria. Special thanks to Mr. Jakes, who does a lot of behind-the-scenes work, Mr. Matthew Bark, Mrs. Karen Papp, our food service director, Cheryl Butts, and our interns, and also my leadership team could not pull it off without their support. So thank you very much to everyone. And then on opening day, what a difference a year makes, because last year, I believe we had a half-day, because we had a heat index of somewhere around 110, 115. So instead of having a half-day, we were able to have a, an actual full day. So 7,000-plus students greeted us. Remember, we've got about 1,000 kids will be starting tomorrow with pre-K and kindergarten opening tomorrow. Once again, I rode the bus, so I was able to, I missed, actually, believe it or not, I missed my bus at Freeman and left without me, but I was able to catch up to it. I was able to find it at Galligan, and we rode the E-Pole route and ended at E-Pole, and then I visited, I can say, I visited every single classroom over a three-day period. So all the teachers and all the students, they were greeted and welcomed back to enjoy the outstanding, what I know will be an outstanding 2019, 2020 school year. So we're off to a great start, and I'm looking forward to the great things that lie ahead of us. That concludes my report.
Is there a motion to accept the report? Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Administrative Business Staffing Report.
Receiving place and file.
Motion's been made. Motion's been made. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Subcommittee reports. Finance and law, Mr. Martin.
Finance and law, I made earlier this evening with myself, Mr. Sousa, Mr. Fury. Also in attendance were Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. First item on the agenda this evening was a request from Hope World School to replenish its student activity account in the amount of $416.07. Second item was bills payable for FY '20, the amount of $790,782,000. Yeah. I've been teaching too much math. $790,782.52. And finally, we had an update on our facilities. The Friedman floor is in, being used. The only thing left to do is have the bleachers installed, and I believe that it will be installed next week. And that will not hinder any use of the of the gymnasium for the students. And you have in your packet a memo regarding the Letty Playground. And I'll let Mr. Cabral explain that, or Ms. Monahan, whoever wants to tackle that one.
I'll be happy to, since I have it.
That's also an unfinished business item, so we can kill two birds with one stone.
So I believe it was Mrs. Almeida, the last meeting, asked me to investigate, or asked the administration to investigate what it would cost to replace the upper playground at Letty. So just to give you some background work, last year, Mrs. Monahan, Dr. Belangra, and Donna DeCoppo worked on a grant with Taylor Torres on the city side. The grant was not accepted to replace the playground at Letty, but we did have all the backup, the design and the cost, or the quote, for a new playground at the upper playground. So to install an ADA compliant playground at the Letty School, that would be a combination poured rubber and wood fiber, would cost $62,700. To have a playground with a full rubber surface would require an additional $45,000, which would bring the cost up to $107,000, $108,000. So again, just wanted to bring this information to the school committee and let you know that this is what it would cost to provide the Letty School with an upper, with the playground on the upper level.
Salmeda, the misterity.
Thank you. Mr. Cabral, is there money in on the revolving account to get this whole playground done?
We don't, we don't have enough money. Well, in the Letty Playground, the Letty, the Letty Revolving Account, we have about $42,000 in the Letty portion of the revolving account. But obviously, in the whole pool of money in revolving, we're sitting on around three, one, three point two million dollars.
Well, I think it's important for these babies to have a playground, some way, shape, or form. Can we do it like in sections, or it has to all be done at once?
I would say we'd have to do it all at once. Because if we just did a wood fiber, it wouldn't be accessible for wheelchairs or students who require.
It's going to be done all at once.
Yes.
On this point, Mr. Martin?
On this point, I would make a suggestion that we approve this, using the money that's in the activity account. But hold off until maybe March, because we're not going to get much use out of it now, between now and, you know, snow flying. And that way, there will no better finances. I'm saying approve it, okay? Just in case we have some shortfalls that we unanticipated, most likely we won't, because, you know, history repeats itself. And we've had a plentiful revolving account in the last number of years. So we approve it now with the installation, maybe March, in time for use all next spring. That's just a suggestion. It doesn't have to be.
Salmeda.
I hear what you're seeing, Mr. Martin, but I think it's important to start it now so it'll be ready for the spring. If we start it in March, then it won't be ready for the children to be able to play in April, May, and June. And there are a lot of children at Letty. And I know for a fact that one playground is not enough for them to get outside and play. And they're little. Little kids need fresh air, they need sunshine, they need to get outside, whether it's warm, cold, whatever. They need to get out there and play. And these children are still babies. They're under five years old, and they need a playground.
We're both in agreement.
I know, but I don't want to wait till March. I want to start it now.
The bit, the price isn't going to change because it's state bid. Am I correct? Most likely.
The price was on the state contract. So we were told, I was told when I spoke with our vendor, Little Tykes, that they would honor the price, whether or not they'll now. So they said if we made a decision by the end of this week, they could have it installed before the ground freezes. So they could get it done in a timely manner if we made a decision now. But I do hear what Mr. Martin is saying, as far as putting on my finance hat, and I do want the kids to have a playground. And depending on the winter that we, the type of winter we have, there could be some usage during the winter as well. But once it starts snowing, the playground is off limits. So I see merit in what both are saying. But what's great to hear is that you both support a playground. You just got to figure out when to install it.
I said, Jody. Mr. Dari, you were next.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we take $107,000 plus out of the revolving account to appropriate money to do this playground.
Second.
If I have a second, I'd like to speak to it. We have not been shy, over the years, to appropriate tens of thousands of hundreds of thousands of dollars to do tennis courts and baseball fields and football stadiums and floors and roofs and ceilings and so forth and so on, all well spent to maintain our facilities. And as my colleague, Mrs. Almeida, says, that this is important for, we've been talking about this for a while, and it is important for our little guys to have a place to play until the snow flies. And so however it's done, whether it's done in increments, whether the price goes up, whatever it is that you have to do, whether some of that money comes out of the Letty revolving account, and some of it comes out of the other end of our revolving account, I think that it's really important that we move forward with resources to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Sousa?
Thank you. I was going to speak on the on this subject matter before the motion was made. So I want to hold that right, because if this, depending on the vote on this. But I am not going to support the $107,000 motion. I will support the $62,700 motion, a motion for that. I was going to recommend that we, a preliminary approval for the 62.7, using the forty-some-odd thousand, and then Senator Administration in two weeks to give us a funding source for the twenty-something thousand. That was, that was going to be what I was going to speak to. I won't support the $107,000. I think it's extravagant price for a playground. But 62,000, I think, is a reasonable suggestion for the for this.
How much you think the playground was at Bennet?
What's that?
How much do you think the playground was at Bennet?
So that's, that's my, that's my input on this. Thank you.
Mr. Fury, then Mr. D'Amillo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in support of this because I agree with Mrs. Dari that we've done a lot for revolving funds for older children and young adults. And I'm in favor of the full amount because it's a safety issue. It's not, we're told that the accessibility is going to be better if we use the complete project. It's safer in terms of accessibility. It's safer in terms of if anything happens to children on the, on the playground. I think that when you're talking about a preschool, that's probably every bit as important, if not more important even than than the classrooms. Because at this point, the socializing and the exercise are every bit as much as anything you get academically from, from the program. And as somebody who in recent years has had some difficulty with accessibility himself, I certainly want to make things as easy for the children as I can.
Mr. D'Amillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I kind of lean towards Mr. Sousa's comment where the $107,000 may be a high price to pay. Now, Mr. Cabral, you said we're limited to Tykes as our vendor. Is that correct? We're just limited to one vendor?
No, we're not limited to one vendor. But in the work that we've done in the past, Little Tykes has the lowest prices for playgrounds. And there are playgrounds that there are vendors we've used multiple times on our sites. The other, the other vendor we've used, for example, on the state contract, were when we've gone out to bid as O'Brien, O'Brien and Sons. And their pricing, when you compare to what we're getting, does not compare to what we get with Little Tykes.
So the $107,000 is firm. Is it possible to get a second or third bid? Or is it just not? I mean, I haven't done a playground since I built my treehouse when I was eight years old. And that was like.
How much they just did at Bennet?
I understand, Mrs. Almeda, but I'm just saying, I mean, it's $107,000. And I agree with my colleague, Mr. Sousa, that we just don't want to spend $107,000. If we can spend $80,000, get the same thing.
If I can just share some information with the committee. So the lower playground that currently exists at Letty is a combination of poured rubber and wood fiber. It's not a complete poured rubber playground. So if we did do what Mr. Sousa's recommending with the 62.7 playground, that would be comparable to what currently exists on site. So to do a, so if we were looking, and it would be fully ADA compliant, because it would have pathways that would lead to the structure, and a path that would lead to the transitionary for the students to get on to the structure. So a 62.7 would be fully compliant, and Mrs. Belangra would be ecstatic to have that. Although having something that's completely poured rubber would be above and beyond what currently exists.
Just a point of information, please, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
So what you've just said, Mr. Cabral, is a contradiction, as I read the memo that was prepared by Mrs. Monahan. It says, Playpower provided a quote for a new playground structure in a combination of poured rubber base and wood fiber totaling 62.7. To make the playground fully ADA compliant with the entire structure, having a poured rubber base, we will need to add an additional $45,000, therefore completing all poured rubber playground would total $107,000. So that's different than what you've just stated, because you just stated that we would only need the 62.7. Regardless of, I think that we're all moving in the same direction. We need to make sure that this playground gets addressed in a way that is, as my colleague says, safe and secure for our children as quickly as possible. So we all need to be on the same page, in my opinion.
Mr. Sousa, you were next on the next round, and then Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To that point, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, through the chair, to have Miss, I, Miss Monahan spoke to us at finance, because I asked the question about the price difference. And she's been working with Mrs. Belangra and the city ADA compliant officer, Donald DeCoppo. And so I'd like her to speak to this, because they're both in agreement that the 62.7 is fully ADA compliant, and they'd be ecstatic with that playground at that price. If the chair would recognize her to just talk about that, I'd appreciate it.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
If the chair would recognize Miss Monahan to speak about the, I speak about the memo.
I thought you said Mrs. DeCoppo, and I'm like, she's not here.
She's not here.
All right.
She's about to want to speak about the memo in that conversation.
Sure. Again, and I apologize if there's some type of language that was misleading in the memo. But to be considered to be ADA compliant with the $62,700, we would be considered to be ADA compliant, because of course, the poured rubber would be a path. To be fully ADA compliant, which means that the entire structure would be able to be accessible, that would be considered to be the additional $45,000 of the poured rubber. So there would be no paths. The entire area would be a poured rubber. So that is fully ADA compliant, if you want to say it that way. But both structure quotes are ADA compliant.
I'm going to go to Mr. Martin next.
Two things. One, I've been gone for thirteen years, and the last playground, I think, I had installed in the school was close to $40,000. So the price of playgrounds has gone up, but those playgrounds back in the early 2000s were not anything like the playgrounds that we have now, as far as ADA goes, and even some of the structures. Second thing is, I think there's some confusion. The Letty account has approximately $45,000 in it. So if we went with the $107,000, we'd have to pay the difference between the 45 and the 107, which would be in the sixties. So I would ask this, and I think we should go with the full compliant ADA. So I'd ask Miss Dari to maybe amend her motion to not exceed the $107,000, which means we don't necessarily have to spend $100,000. We can take some of the student activity money. There may be some donations that come in between now and then. And it wouldn't be a total of $107,000 that would come out of revolving. But we would go with the full-fledged.
I, I accept that. Yeah, I mean, it makes sense. We want it to be fully ADA compliant. It's just very difficult for us, me, to make a cogent judgment on information that's half correct, unless I get, I heard Mrs. Monahan say, the language is a little confusing. We have to have information that represents the situation so that we can all make decisions based on that information, rather than saying, oh, no, I didn't mean that. It means this. It's very confusing.
So if I could just clarify, if I could clarify quickly.
Please, I'm not finished.
But I'd like to clarify after Mrs. Dari speaks.
May I continue, please, based on what Mrs. Mr. Martin had said?
Mr. Dari, go ahead.
I think that we have done this before, where we have said not to exceed. My motion did say money from the Letty School line, as well as the bottom line in the revolving account, could be used. So we need to go forward with that. We just need to go forward with this, this repair of the playground at Letty so that it is fully ADA compliant.
Mr. D'Amillo is next, and Mr. Fury, Ms. Salmeda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so everybody understands, I am fully, fully in agreement with bringing a playground to 100% ADA compliance. But in order to make a more informed decision, whether we spend 62 or 107, can we get some, some sketches, some artist rendering, whatever you call that, so we can see what we're talking about? I mean, I think it's only fair, again, I think all of us here are not architects, maybe some are, I'm not sure, but so we can see what the difference is. And I'm sure if our vendor has been doing this for so long, and with other school departments, school districts, I'm sure they have something pretty quick that they can put together.
Yeah, actually, I.
And I'd like to table this until we get those.
Second.
Motion to table takes precedent. Motion's been made and seconded.
Is already a motion on the floor?
Table precedent.
We take precedent to table the motion. And I think, I think if everybody's more comfortable, that's probably the best course of action, just to come back next meeting with the actual price and the sketches, then everybody can see what you're voting on, and everybody's happy. And we still move forward. Because that's the bottom line. Everybody wants to move forward.
Exactly. Thank you.
Mr. Fury, did you, you were, had your hand up, and I will recognize you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there's no discussion on the table.
Notice you're on the motion to table.
You're correct. You're correct.
And I had my hand up before they did.
On the motion to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Show your hands, please. All those in favor?
Is the motion appropriate to table or postpone? That's.
Well, we could table it for one meeting.
No, you have to vote to, at the next meeting, vote to take it off the table before you can even discuss the, so you should postpone it to the next meeting.
I don't, I think it's worth, in everybody's best judgment, to get the actual price with the sketch, and that everybody can see what they're voting on. Then you can move forward expeditiously.
So that's absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. And it should be a motion to postpone until such time as we have the.
How about just postpone, if you withdraw your motion, we just postpone it till next week.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to withdraw my motion to table and postpone it till the next school committee meeting.
Second.
Would you be, maker of the motion be, although, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is, we have, you're all, oh, we got a, we're still on your report, aren't we, Mr. Martin?
I think so.
Mr. Martin, we're still in finance and law.
So we had a facilities update, which obviously included the Letty Playground. And that was the last item we talked about, other than the fact that the next school building committee meeting is on Tuesday, September 17th, at 8:30 at Friedman. And that's the report of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you, Mr. Martin. New business, we have the 2019 MCAS report.
Yeah, I'd ask Mr. Barata to quickly review the memo with the school committee, that's in your packet, regarding the release of the MCAS, MCAS scores from last year.
Good evening, everyone. Inside your packet is just a timeline in which the state releases the data to schools and districts. As you'll note, the majority of those dates are very much fluid, with the exception of the first one, which is September 4th, where that preliminary data was delivered to us, where we could review it. Through the remainder of September, through mid-September to late September, all those scores and district rankings are embargoed, which means we cannot share that information publicly. Although internally, building-based and district-wide, we'll be looking at information, looking at trends for planning purposes moving forward. Late December is when the accountability rating comes out. If you remember, last October, when I presented the MCAS results, where we showed the charts and such, that's when that information will be released. So I'm sorry to say that I haven't got the exact numbers to provide you now. Again, it's abiding by the state's guidelines of embargoing all that information. But I can tell you that schools have begun to look at their preliminary information, and they're beginning to already put plans in place, especially the four promising practicing sites, which is using that information to then build upon what they set in motion last June with the plans.
Mr. Dari, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Barata, thank you for that. I missed the, the school committee meeting date at which you believe you would be bringing forth that information.
Right. Well, if we followed last year's pattern, it was like October. And I think we're, we're banking on like an October presentation to the school committee with our, with our released public data.
Either the first or the second.
I leave that to the will of committee, and when it's based upon, we'll release the state.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dari. Any further questions? Thank you. That was it. Thank you very much, Mr. Barata. Unfinished business is going to be next meeting. Yes, action, well, yes, we're going to, I was going, Mr. Sousa, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I got two items that I'd like to refer to subcommittees. And the first one is to refer, a motion to refer to the Long Range Planning and Facility Subcommittee to work with the administration to start a conversation and a possible feasibility study for an academic building addition to Taunton High School for the band and the junior RLT C.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Mr. Chairman, the second motion is a motion to refer to Finance and Law Subcommittee for. Mr. Chairman, the second motion is a motion to refer to Finance and Law Subcommittee for, during the FY twenty-twenty-one budget here, budget, as a twenty-twenty-one budget item, to re, review the cost for all available technology and options to improve bus and van safety stops, excuse me, bus and van safety during the stops when the red lights are flashing.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Is there any further unfinished business, or, nope? Ms. Doherty, please.
So you have an item on the, well, a couple of things. One is that we got a field trip request that we.
Yes, actually, Ms. Doherty, I was gonna.
We neglected to amend the.
Yeah, I was gonna bring it up, I know, we noticed that as well, I was gonna bring it up under Critical Items, just because tonight would be a five, just as, but if you, yeah, I can bring that up under Critical Items, because technically, it wasn't posted.
Yeah, so I have two items of, well, they're old business, I don't know about unfinished business. The first one is that maybe a meeting ago, we made a recommendation to the City Council regarding a Siemens report.
Yes.
I.e. energy efficiency, and the recommendation was for the city and the school department to collaborate over a solution to implementation, and I'm just wondering, Mr. Cabral, if we, if that has begun, and if we have an, could we have an update?
Yes and no. So we have had conversations, I'm awaiting paperwork, I'm awaiting financial reports, that Dana Rasmussen shared, stated he would share with me regarding some new models that he's developed, but I've again stated the school committee's position, which was the motion by Mr. Martin, that they, we supported, the school committee supported the program, that in, supported the program, but wanted the cost charged against the school department as an indirect cost, but did not want to see our appropriation impacted. But, so I have shared that information, and I'm waiting for feedback from Dana that I will share with the committee.
If I might continue, you said new model, Mr. Cabral, what, what do you?
Fin, financial model. So Mr. Rasmussen shared that the interest rate to fund the program is down below three percent, which reduces the interest cost to the city, school department, depending on how it's funded, by close to a half a million dollars. I asked him to share that financial model with me, because he also said it reduces the term of the loan from twenty years to about eighteen, nineteen years.
So I'm, I'm just wondering, excuse me, Mrs. Almeida, just one more point, I'm wondering if it's, at some point, so if we're talking about new data, new information, that might lend itself to more discussion on the part of both bodies, the City Council and the school committee, that we might consider having a joint meeting, and this was recommended early on when we were having these discussions, some of us came to the City Council meeting, City Council members came to our meeting, and it just seems to me that if there is new information coming forward, that it would be worth having a joint meeting, so that all of us, both bodies, are on the same page, so that as we move forward toward decision-making, we all have the same information. I have to say that for my part, and I'm not a techie person, I tried, tried as I might, I don't, I still don't have a full understanding of that financial model, and how that impacts us, and how Mr. Martin's motion, which we adopted and I voted for, impacts us in the overall going down the road. So I would like us to consider, and we might put it on our action items, having a joint meeting at the appropriate time with the City Council to have us all be on the same page. Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty, yes, we were at that City Council meeting, and they put it on, they referred it to go back to them. It's under their purview now, whether or not they decide to accept their proposal or not accept their proposal. It has nothing to do with the school committee at this point. Mr. Mayor, has it come back to the council yet, the proposal, or is it still in limbo?
It's not in limbo, but, you know, with the beginning of, the opening of school and vacations at the end of the summer, I know we, we have to sit down, myself, Mr. Enos, Mr. Cabral, Mrs. Moynihan, and just talk about how, how we're gonna, how it's gonna work out. It's, it's a beneficial program, it's gonna, it's going to contribute to the capital needs, certainly of our facilities, and i, it's a strong program. It's just, we have to just figure out the, the finances in a manner that everyone's happy, and that's, that's the goal with the whole thing. Go ahead, Jody.
I was at that council meeting, along with Mrs. Doherty and Mr. Fiore, and I'm not sure who else, and Mr. DeMello was there, and the council expected, they made a motion for Siemens to go back to them with more information, so.
I don't think that was the, I, I believe they approved it pending the, the funding agreement, but I'll, I'll go back, I don't have.
They can, they approved it conceptually, whatever that was supposed to mean.
Correct.
And there was no clarification on that particular wording, so.
We'll work it out.
Okay.
Like the Beatles say.
Yeah.
Mr. Fiore, and then Mr. DeMello, and then Martin Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having been a part of the council and the school committee, having seen how net school spending is negotiated, it's not really something for the whole school committee and the whole council to be dealing with. They need to have the financial teams together, and, and then bring it to the school committee and the council for their approval. I, I think it becomes too cumbersome if we have too many people, it's sort of like the rule that a camel is a horse that's built by a committee. I think, I think you need to, to limit who's involved in the negotiations, so that you get a streamlined solution. The bottom line of Mr. Martin's motion is, and, and I had to explain this to the council, because even councillors who were here didn't realize it, that we were actually looking for an expansion of our net school spending formula. We, we want to keep our appropriations the same, but we're willing to have this attributed to net school spending, and having a higher net school spending helps us with accreditation, it helps us with certain grant funding, and it's beneficial to the city, but we shouldn't be having eight school committee people and nine councillors in, it needs to be the financial professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind my colleagues that I voted no, as far as sponsoring that moving forward, and I think I gave my explanation, but mostly, as Chair of the Long Range Planning Subcommittee, when they first came before us, and two other times since then, many things have changed, and now I'm hearing something else has changed. Now, I'm hearing it's for the better, but again, too many moving parts. I, I think that they, they're working on their record, and their record is very long and valid, based on their opinion. I, I think we can do it much better and a lot cheaper, so I still vote no, even though there's no vote. Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Fiore hit the nail right on the head, because back, going back to Ed reform nineteen ninety-three, net school spending was always negotiated, you know, the city has one idea, the school department has another idea, but the bottom line is a negotiation that takes place between the superintendent and the mayor, and in most cases, the budget director for the city and the finance person for the school department, but those four people get together and hammer it out, and, and as Mr. Fiore alluded to, they come back to what they've decided. So we put that in the hands of the superintendent of schools and the mayor, and what happens, happens. That's the way it's always been, in my experience, and I'm sure you worked with Dr. Hackett when she was superintendent, and you met with Mayor Hoy and Mr. Enos, and everybody came out friends.
Usually. The, if I may, before I go to Ms. Doherty, that's a good point, Mr. Martin, that's something that the superintendent and I have talked, talked about, as well as Gilliness. There is some area, you know, it was done back in the early nineties, there's some, there's some areas there that we could probably improve upon, that would be better for the, more beneficial to the school department, and some areas, areas that'd be more beneficial to the city, but, you know, there, there are just some, I, I call them placeholder numbers in there. I mean, most, most of the budget process between us is easy. It's usually just the, the last little portion of it, as it is with most budgets, that you really have to sit down and discuss, but, you know, I, to really look at those numbers from a, from a different perspective, I, I think, or a more modern perspective, I think would be beneficial to all parties. Ms. Doherty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that the continued discussions, for me anyway, give me a little bit more information every time this is brought up. I was thinking about what Mrs. Almeida said, what she left the City Council meeting with, and that was an agreement that the, that the decision would be made outside of us. I can't imagine, though, that any decisions that affect our budget going forward would not come back to us in some way, whether it's just by way of information, or for, in the form of a recommendation and a vote in that regard, so I would hope, whatever the outcome is, that it would, it would be that, and I, and I just have to say that the proposal, and it's very contentious, because we're thinking twenty years, I'll be, well, cold by then, or dead and gone, or pushing up daisies, or whatever one does under those circumstances.
Probably be in Congress by then.
It, it is forward-thinking, and I'm imagining that solar energy, for example, will be archaic twenty years from now, and there'll be some other form of energy efficiency, but for us to start first with making our plants citywide, energy efficient, no air leaks, better switches, better plug, whatever it is that's in that report is, is really important, it's not clear to me, and we need, well, we got somebody from the TMLP here to talk about what the TMLP can at, at some point in time do in that regard. We, we really don't know that.
Can't lower the rates much more.
Yeah. People have said TMLP, and, but there isn't any report that says, yeah, we can do these six things.
There's no, this, just to be clear, there's no, the TMLP does not offer that type of program. That was thrown out at a council meeting, but they don't, they do some, some home efficiency testing, and they do some thing, you know, some things along those lines, and they do some solar programs. I have, you know, fifty panels on my own house, but they're, they're not in, in this business of, of the ESCO at this point.
Exactly, thank you. Enough said, we'll await the next chapter in this conversation, thank you.
Mr. Souza?
And just to wrap it all up, I, we all came to the same, we're all coming to the same point, and that is, put the financial experts from the school side and the city side together with the chief executive, that's you, Mr. Mayor, and let them hash it out, that's what we all agreed to here, and I heard that they agreed to there, so we get to that point, and it knows it's gonna come back to us, because it's a budget item, and we just, we just go from there. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We are. Action items, Mr. O'Brien?
Action, Mayor. There are four items still on the action item. I don't know, I'll go backwards, I just want to ask Superintendent Cabral, maybe he can give us an update, Attorney John Holgerson and Ms. Mary, okay, those letters were sent?
Those letters were sent, correct, Wendy? Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Would there be a motion to take that off, then, as both? And, and I'll mention their names for the motion, it's Attorney John Holgerson and Ms. Mary Bonnie Knopf, the two very great, were very grateful for the fact they did their work.
Thought we did that, but all those in favor?
I mentioned, right.
Both so voted, I thought we did that last meeting.
We didn't take it off.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. We, we voted for it. Yes. Provide each school chair of honor update, please? All right, that's still pending. How about Safety Officer Chris Williams? All right, and then I believe the top one is still pending, correct?
Yep, my new superintendent's induction program, we meet next week, so I hope to have some updates regarding strategic planning.
Thank you.
We do have another, under new business.
Uh, go ahead, Ms. O'Brien?
We do have one critical item, not reasonably anticipated forty hour, forty-eight hours in advance. Major Anderson.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both so voted?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and Ms. Almeida. Major Anderson and Master Sergeant LaPlante are requesting a GROTC field trip, it's all in our packets.
With approval.
Motion made, and seconded, on discussion, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for future school committee retreats, if we could look at September twenty-sixth, we start out at five-thirty AM with physical training, we then do an obstacle course at ten-thirty, and we do team training scenarios and marksmanship at one-thirty in the afternoon. If we could do that for our future school committee retreat?
I want to see you in that uniform again. All those in favor, the mo, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fiore, I'm ready to discuss.
I wouldn't want to trust any of us here with marksmanship.
Especially around the, especially around the election. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion was to approve the field trip.
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman? There's a calendar in the packet, there was just updates from the last meeting that we approved. I think it would be appropriate, because it's actually under unfinished business, to bring it up on the table, because our motion that we approved the calendar as presented?
The only change to the calendar was the recommendation made by Mr. DeMello, on the November thirteenth, moving the November twentieth meeting to November thirteenth.
Okay. Motion's made to approve and seconded, on discussion, Ms. Almeida? So you want to just go to December?
I'll amend my motion to, the, the problem is, you still have to have meetings in January, February already. A, a motion for the hard calendar till the end of December.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, on discussion, Ms. Doherty?
Yeah, if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to divide the question and take out the November thirteenth date, because I'm opposed to changing the date from the regular meeting, November twentieth, to the meeting on the thirteenth, although I don't disapprove of the rest of the calendars, so I don't want my no vote to include September, October, and December.
I'm gonna ask you to explain, no. I'm, I'm just. Maker of the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to divide the question, voting on.
I'll stick with the original motion.
Thank you, Mr. Souza, I really appreciate that.
Okay. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Show your hands, please, all those in favor? One, yes, one, two.
This is on dividing the question. Not on the calendar.
No. This is, this is on, this is on the motion.
Why is it not on dividing the question?
He didn't, he refused to divide the question.
Well, we didn't vote.
We don't have to, he didn't, he didn't want to modify his motion.
So generally, the chair would say if there's no objection, we'll divide the question, or?
Generally, that doesn't usually happen.
All right.
Let's just, let's just.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
We already voted on this at the last meeting, and we just approved the minutes of the last meeting, and no one challenged those minutes, that this was already decided, that we were going to have just the meeting on November thirteenth, and not have the meeting on the sixth, and that's part of the minutes that we just approved tonight, so it's a moot point, we don't have to vote on this again.
Well, nonetheless, I, I did object.
You were, you objected, and it's noted that you objected, but we don't need to vote on it again.
And I object again, I continue to object.
That's fine.
Withdraw the motion.
Thank you. No motion. Press time. Okay, is there a motion to go back to evaluation of the superintendent? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, I'm gonna turn it over to Chairman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr.
This is where you shine, my friend.
Yeah, fantastic. Previous, yeah, must be going through puberty. Previously, I haven't stopped growing yet, either. As we discussed previously, this evening, we're scheduled to start the process evaluating Superintendent Cabral. We do have the cover leather that was generated, it goes over the details, if you'd like, I can read it, but I know we've had it for a week or so. We do also have the rubric based on our current policy, and Ms. Doherty was correct, we did vote to go out of the regular order of our policy to evaluate the superintendent now, and then we'll go over the rubric, I can read through the instructions and each responsibility, and then we can go around the horn and let members give their informa, give their input to each of the five items. Myself and Secretary Almeida will take notes, and then we'll take that information along with our school committee secretary Wendy, and Ms. Devine, and we will then, the next meeting will have that formally presented view for a final vote, that way you get its second chance to look at any comments or opinions you wanted to provide. Everything we put on the table this evening and discuss is open public record, same as the final vote we make in the subsequent meeting in September. If there's no further, if there's no questions, I can start right away. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item, this, I'll go over the basic instructions once. The school committee will develop a comprehensive evaluation of the superintendent. For each one of the six areas of responsibility, we will rate the superintendent's performance on the expectations. At the start of each school year, the superintendent will submit three goals to the school. At the start of each school year, the superintendent will submit three goals to the school committee for approval. Each goal will be related to an area of responsibility. If applicable, also rate the superintendent's performance on the goals submitted for that area of responsibility. Next, give an overall rating for the area of responsibility with comments and/or examples that justify and expand upon the rating. There's a key there that goes from unsatisfactory to needs improvement, proficient, or exceeds expectations. These basic instructions apply to each of the different responsibilities, and I'll go for it. Number one responsibility is relationship with the school committee. The description of this responsibility is as follows. The school committee relies on the superintendent in order to make informed decisions that will affect the quality of education for the public school children in our community. In order to promote a climate of mutual respect and trust, a professional working relationship should be maintained. The superintendent should establish clear direction for the school committee meetings by providing agendas and support materials that allow for reasonable policy formation and informed decision-making. It is expected that the superintendent will support and implement school committee policies and directives, and communicate these to the students, staff, and members of the community. Expectation 1.1 is keeps the school committee committed, committee informed on the issues, needs, and operation of the school system. If anyone would like to share their thoughts on that first item, please. Mr. Fury.
Thank you. I think all anybody would have to do is look at the text portions of the telephones of any of us to know that the superintendent has been exceeding expectations in keeping us informed. We get calls and texts and emails from him on a very regular basis, even on matters that he can't discuss publicly, he will at least tell us the issue exists, and I think he definitely goes above and beyond in that respect.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Any further comment from the members? Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor. My colleague, Mr. Fury stated it correctly, these communications come morning, noon, night, different days, different times. I know I've communicated, and personally, I've communicated with the superintendent. Not only is he sending information this way on items that he thinks we need to be aware of, but I've sent him, whether it's emails or messages, at various times, including 5 o'clock in the morning, and the superintendent is more than willing to share information and answer any questions that I have. So, I agree with my colleague on the rating of exceeds expectations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Any further comment from other members? Ms. Dougherty, please.
So, I, just yesterday, the superintendent let the school committee know that it is his intention going forward to provide us with at least weekly, for want of a better description, newsletters to keep us up to date on things that are going on at that particular moment, and I think that that is a great remedy to some of the concerns that I have had in terms of information forthcoming. And so, I agree with my colleagues, text messages, phone calls, superintendent's report, superintendent's availability readily. If I make a call, he calls back immediately, if not almost immediately, and that is truly appreciated, and takes the time to have the conversation that at least you listen to me, at least I need, in order to be fully informed in terms of where I'm going with things. However, so I would say to a large measure, absolutely, the superintendent does a nice job. However, there are occasions when I have read and continue to do so about things that are going on in the district on Twitter, not so much on Facebook, not at all on Facebook, but on Twitter, and that happened early on, and still does occasionally in the superintendent's administration. But being new, I suppose it's hard to determine what it is that is shared, and what it is that we as school committee members find out on our own, and what it is that requires recommendation and decision-making. And I think of the example that occurs is when the three middle school principals were appointed. We, the school committee has no role in decision-making, that is the superintendent's responsibility. However, I heard about those appointments somewhere else, outside, over a glass of wine by somebody else who knew, and so I immediately called the superintendent and said, yikes, what happened in that regard? And in the subsequent meeting, he provided us with information about those appointments. And so, I think that making a determination, the superintendent making a determination on what needs immediate attention, what should be brought up on a school committee, at the school committee, and what it is that he would make recommendations for us to, on items for us to act on. So, I would give a proficient in this regard.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Any further, Mr. Martin, please.
I'm not a big fan of online material, and I say that publicly, because I'm not on Facebook, or so forth and so on, but I do appreciate when there are issues going on that we, it's me anyway, and I'm sure my colleagues are notified immediately, needs in the operation of what's going on, and the superintendent is the CEO of this organization, and he keeps us informed as to what's going on, and if there are things that we don't need to know, he doesn't tell us, and I think that's appropriate. I go on the premise of, if I need to know, then I should know, and if I don't need to know, I don't want to know. And I'll just give an example, things happen with personnel, he doesn't tell us what's going on, he just says there's an issue, and doesn't go any further, because he is the decision-making individual on those issues, and it's, it's, I don't say required of him to tell us that things are going on, but he does make us aware of what's going on. So, I don't, I guess what I'm saying is, the three principals, he hires the principals. Now, we're eventually going to find out who they are, I mean, if we don't find out immediately, then, you know, that's, I don't have a problem with that, because it's ultimately his decision to hire and fire people that work for us. But if there's a major issue going on, we know immediately. We get those messages, the phone goes off, and again, he doesn't go into detail, because he, in some cases, can't, but we do know that this thing's happening. So, I have no problem with my two colleagues, Mr. Fury and Mr. Souza, giving him exemplary in that category, because having worked for several superintendents, I think he does a great job in keeping us informed as to what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any further comments from other members? Ms. Vagan, please.
As far as this entire responsibility relationship with the school committee, even though I've had disagreements with Mr. Cabral on several things, curriculum, personnel, other issues, I can't express how grateful I am that he never takes anything personally, he always tries to explain to the best that he can. I think he does a good job in this aspect of what he has to do. It can't be easy to try to get along with eight different people, and sometimes you, Mr. Mayor, not all the time. I can't imagine trying to be a peacemaker sometimes when things go on, and I know things have gotten difficult at this table. We're all different people, we all think differently about things, whether it's about how much homework we do, but what I appreciate about Mr. Cabral is that he's very respectful to all of us. He always goes along with that attitude, it's, I can, we can agree to disagree, which you don't see too much of these days, but he makes that attempt, which I am very appreciative of, and I don't think, I've never felt marginalized when I talk to him. He listens to what I have to say, he may not always agree with me, I don't always agree with him, but that's okay. At least we walk out, and I would, I'd still feel comfortable coming back a half an hour later and telling him something. As far as not knowing what's going on, sometimes you, someplace purely by accident, you find out something, and it's, he doesn't even know it yet, you know? So, I don't think you can possibly know everything that goes on, Mr. Cabral, you know? It just, it just doesn't happen. But I think overall, as far as this aspect, I have issues with some other things that I'll bring up after, but as far as this aspect, I certainly can't fault him on the way he treats us, the way he treats people in the school system, the way I've seen him treat parents, and I certainly do appreciate the fact that he's got the guts to get on the bus the first day of school and drive all around the city. And, I mean, those are all things that, to me, you really have to kind of hold in high regard, as far as what you do. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. So, I would go on this whole thing here.
Thank you, Ms. Vagan. And you bring an excellent point, I should have read all five of them, otherwise I read slow. So, just for the other members, and if you have thoughts, I'll read the other four, just to give, if you have additional comments relative to relationship with us. Gives a recommendation to the school committee on items requiring action based upon thorough research and analysis, interprets, supports, and executes the intent of the school committee policy, seeks and maintains a professional working relationship with the school committee, and supports and enhances the school committee's core values, budget commitments, and budget priorities. So, if that stimulates any further comment, or any further, Mr. Fury, please.
Well, after having said glowing things about one area, I want to say something else. In terms of interprets, supports, and executes the intent of school committee policy, I don't want him to exceed expectations. If he has ideas and he has professional opinion, I want to hear it. I'd rather say he's proficient at that than exceeds expectation, because I think he has to have a mind, and I think he needs to use it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fury. Any further comment on his relationship with us? Ms. Almeida, then, Mr. Souza, please. Ms. Almeida, please.
I find that the superintendent has been very upfront, he keeps us informed, he certainly brings things to our attention, and I think he's, has a good working relationship with the school committee, and he absolutely, positively knows the budget and the priorities that the school department needs to take for the current year. So, I would say that he exceeds in all of those areas of relationship with the school committee.
Thank you, Ms. Almeida. Mr. Souza, please.
Thank you. Are we going through each one of these? Because we usually do these as a group, a total group. I just want to clarify.
No, I stand corrected, I actually added the other four to do them as a group. So, yes, it's, so I'm putting, I'm doing...
That's what I thought.
Because I tried to touch on everything.
Yes, thank you.
So, that's why I read the, in the subsequent responsibility, yes, yes.
I do that because I had it in front of me.
No, rookie mistake, but yes, I will read all five next time, so we can kind of mix our comments.
Just trying to help you out, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, I, thank you, that's why we're a team. Any further comments on the relationship between Superintendent Cabral and us? Hearing nothing further, I'll move on.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, the relationship with the school committee responsibility, number one, that we market as exceeds expectation.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, on discussion of the motion. Hearing, Mr. DeMello, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a one-page submission that I will attach, but I misunderstood the first question, so anything that's on this document, which I will share in part of the record, is not really valid to that particular question. So, I will amend this evaluation and also support the exceeds expectation.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Ms. Almeida, please.
A point of information, Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
We do not do anything in writing on the superintendent's evaluation, he's evaluated as a whole, from the whole committee.
I have notes, though. I'm reading off notes.
Are you reading off notes?
Yeah.
We're not supposed to take notes. Okay.
You can't take notes on evaluation?
Well, it tells you one.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I have no, I mean, I have to, when I did the evaluation, I took some time and some effort into compiling notes on, like, every, my colleagues of, you know, areas of strengths and areas of weakness. So, unless I have notes, I have nothing to go off of.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Ms. Dougherty, please.
I think that we've had this discussion before, and I believe...
Put it on the table.
Hold on, Ms. Dougherty, please.
Yeah, and I would look to Mrs. Almeida for this, I think there's somewhere in our policy that says that if you bring materials in writing, that they become part of the record, and so therefore submitted as part of the record. You don't necessarily...
But you don't put it on the table.
The form.
You just put it on the table.
It's on the table.
Then it becomes part of the public table.
That's fine, and I expect that.
Okay.
And it's on the table, because I have nothing to hide, and I'm expecting it to be part of the record, exactly. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, and we're going to move on to response. Yeah, pardon me, thank you, Mr. Souza. Okay, there's a motion, a second on the floor to grade this responsibility. Number one, as exceeds expectations, made by Mr. Souza, seconded by Mr. Martin. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? All right, he gets an E for number one. Number two, responsibility instructional leadership. The focus of decisions must be in the best interest of students. In order to provide effective leadership, the superintendent should keep abreast of the latest developments in the field of education. Curriculum instruction, assessment, evaluation, and professional development are areas of focus for the superintendent and shall be considered in the formulation of goals. There's five expectations. Leads the school system's renewal of curriculum and instructional programs in compliance with the district's strategic plan, including mission, vision, and goals. Applies current principals' practices and research to foster effective classroom instruction. Holds principals, teachers, and staff accountable for having high standards and positive expectations that all students can perform at high levels. Works with principals, teachers, and staff to supervise and evaluate their performance using performance standards to identify areas for growth. Supervises and evaluates central office administrators, principals, and other staff as appropriate. On the instructional leadership of Superintendent Cabral, Mr. DeMello, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, on all five categories, 2.1 to 2.5, I did note exceeds expectations, is that what the E stands for?
Yes.
Exceeds expectations. But I do want to share with the superintendent, because I know he has a big heart. So, the comment goes as follows. It is my belief that the superintendent establishes team, and that his expectations have been met. If they haven't, not be afraid to restructure that team and rebuild if necessary. I would support his decision, because it would be made in the best interest of our students. So, basically, it kind of summarizes from 2.1 to 2.5, but mostly on 2.5, when he supervises and evaluates his administration and principals and other staff as appropriate. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mr. Fury, then Ms. Dougherty, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually a little bit fuzzy on how I want to treat this, because one of Mr. Cabral's greatest strength in instructional leadership has been his ability to delegate and work cooperatively with others. We get very good input from curriculum supervisors, we get very good input from Mr. Barata in his primary area of responsibility. Certainly, Mr. Cabral is very effective in supervising this, but I have to say, he's someone who shares the credit.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Ms. Dougherty, please.
Well, I just, I think that, as far as I can tell, Mr. Cabral has performed in an exemplary, an exemplary way in all of the categories, with the exception of 2.1, and not that his effort under the district strategic plan is not exemplary, but that the strategic plan does not exist at this point in time. So, I would ask that in the report, the final report that comes to the school committee for adoption in terms of the superintendent's evaluation, that the writers make note of the fact that this is not, we can't measure this item, because it does not exist, and it should be noted that there is a plan to move forward, but that it will come up in the next evaluation cycle. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Any other members on the instructional leadership? Mr. Sousa, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a, they're all strengths, but I think this is a huge strength for Mr. Cabral. He's had experience as a, as a teacher, as a building administrator, as a budget person, and then now as a superintendent. And I, did I miss any? And I think I've got, I think I've got all, I think I've got, and a coach, basketball coach, I, I, he's, I think I've got all his hats. The reason I say all of that is that, um, he sees over a period of time where education is, is headed. He's not afraid to try, uh, think outside the box, try new ideas, see if it works, get the team together, understand that that's the approach, take all the input, and then figure out what direction he's headed. But I, as a technology guy myself, as an engineer, I, I think we're, we're, we're headed in the right direction by this effort with steam, um, no matter if it's a student pursuing secondary pursuits in college, uh, no matter if it's a person going into the military, no matter if it's a person going into technical vocation career, or a person going directly in the workforce. Any type of this, any type of the steam tech, uh, the steam effort is going to help them and benefit them. Remember, the kids that are in kindergarten today are going to be in the workforce with the, with the jobs that don't, not even created yet. And that, and that's, and that could be just five years out, too. There's, there's technology, and there's things that are happening that are five years out, that are not even, don't even exist today. So our efforts in, in, in technology, and just thinking outside the box, in, in creative thinking, um, is, is, is an effort i- across all curriculum levels, that is, is a real strong suit, uh, for this district, and, and I appreciate it personally, um, but I think that's a strong suit for Mr. Cabral in, in his academically, uh, instructional leadership, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. Any other members have any feedback? Is there a motion on the responsibility or feedback?
Motion that the superintendent exceeds in all areas.
Second.
Any further, I'm sorry, Mr. Uh, motion made in second, and Mr. Martin, please.
On discussion, I think that Ms. Doherty's concern or comment about the compliance with the district's strategic plan, uh, that isn't in existence should be noted in the comments.
Yes.
It will be.
As a narrative, yeah. Yeah, I think your comments should be noted in the comments. I was just saying that, yeah. So that's, other than that, I have no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any further questions on the motion to label this an E? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Next responsibility is management and operations. The superintendent has the responsibility for the efficient operation of the school system. The response of those assigned the task of carrying out the activities necessary to the success of the system depend on the superintendent's effective oversight and ability to promote an awareness of the goals and objectives to employees in the system. It is important that the superintendent is familiar with and has a strong understanding of state and federal laws, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regulations, and school committee policy. The expectations are: establishes systems, plans, procedures, and routines to ensure effective school management and operations; advocates for the system and maintains open communication with legislators and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education; leads ethically by interacting with others in a professional manner and accepts responsibility for his own actions and subordinates; organizes effectively and plans ahead to meet the school system's needs; serves as a resource to the school committee on matters of collective bargaining. Any members have comments on management and operations? Mr. Fury, please.
That is Mr. Cabral. This is a man who went from being a very effective principal at a very young age to being our business official for eight years, and totally redefining systems all the way through, and then bringing that through to the superintendency, where he brings the academic side into it. I mean, uh, these expectations are almost the definition of Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Mr. DeMello, then, Mr. Sousa, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So from item three point one to three point five, on item three point two, um, I, I did mark it as proficient. The reasoning being, and I'll read it since I wrote it, I would hope that in the year ahead, the superintendent be more visible on Beacon Hill, and locally with our state delegation, as well as our federal delegation. So, um, whatever that means, but I think it means a lot. I, I think that, um, being a superintendent and his role, I, I think that, uh, a lot can be, how should I say? Well, let's use the example, when, when Jason Lewis came down with Senator Pacico to Bridgewater State University on the forum, uh, I don't know if you already knew those people in place or not, so I think maybe putting a face with the, the name, um, just a casual conversation, coffee, whatever, I think goes a long way. And that's my only critique. So getting out, hitting the pavement, whether it's Beacon Hill, even our federal delegation, wouldn't hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mr. Sousa, please.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On management, uh, obviously, Mr. Cabral had many years of experience in the operations in his last role, but I think, um, some of, we, we have to remember, going back to his interview, when, um, he came and we, we were, he had the interview process here, before we hired him, uh, Mr. Cabral said, "I have made tough decisions, I will continue to make tough decisions." And, uh, and he talked about the tough decisions as a, as a, as a management, and being in management, and knowing that he had to make those. So I think that that's, um, his professional persona, and he knows that he has to make those decisions. And I've been in, uh, collective bargaining with Mr. Cabral, uh, many times, tough, tough, tough negotiations, uh, fifteen, twenty meetings, uh, on one contract, and, um, we had to, the term, as Tom Brady says, is grind it out. We had to grind it out for those meetings, and, and a lot of back and forth, but again, uh, the tough decisions, and you get the, uh, get the job done, so I, I agree with my colleagues, uh, as exceeds expectation on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. Ms. Doherty, please.
Just on item three two, I, um, say, hear, hear to Mr. DeMello's suggestion to pay more attention to the legislative delegation. We don't, I, I think that for me, there is information missing. So I know that Mr. Cabral has gone to the Hill on several occasions. I know that he interacts with the Department of Education personnel, if not he, then Mr. Barata and other members of the leadership team, but we don't necessarily hear about that. Our finance and law committee is finance and law, and maybe it's legislative activity, so, and I know that the School Committees Association, probably the Superintendents Association, sends out a lot of information around legislative activity that we should be aware of, so all of that could be included in some sort of, we add that to your list of things, Mr. Cabral, uh, to put on that new memo that you're going to send us. And all of us bring things from time to time, I think, from a legislative perspective, anyway, and it's just, it's really important, as the bad guys are trying to get public education, we need to know when it is that we should take positions and, uh, intercede in that regard. So that kind of information and interaction would be helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Any further comment? Mr. Sousa.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I was going to say, and you, you said it right at the end, is, is about the, is about his, his association, superintendent's M.A.S.S., and there's probably information that flows back and forth there. We may not hear it, because we're M.A.S.C., and sometimes it's good to get that, and that's, that's the only way the, if the information flows to us to edu-, get, continue to get educated on exactly, not only what's happening on Beacon Hill, but, uh, in other, in other areas. And it could be just a matter of, uh, what's new, what's, what's trending down the road, that we need to keep our, keep our ear to the pavement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. Any further comments on management and operations? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion that the superintendent exceeds in all areas.
Second.
Okay, is a motion a second on the floor to give a E for management and operations? Any further comment on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Number four is budget management. The school committee has the responsibility of approving the budget, and the superintendent has the responsibility to present that budget to the school committee in a manner that promotes their full understanding. The budget should take into consideration the needs of the entire system based on a formal assessment process. The need to promote the school system and gather community support for school finances is an integral component of the budget process. The expectations are as follows. Develops a budgeting system that is clear and concise. Fosters a cooperative relationship with the city to ensure the financial needs of the school system are understood. Develops a process for ensuring that the city is made aware of the school system's financial, capital, and educational needs. Works with the business manager assistant superintendent to ensure financial accountability and responsibility with the district's finances. Provides regular updates, projections to the school committee for regular budget, revolving accounts, and grants. Mr. Martin, please, on budget management.
Many people sitting at this table recall when we hired Mr. Cabral as the assistant superintendent, and it came down to two people, Mr. Cabral and the other individual, was a seasoned business manager, and Mr. Cabral said to us, "You give me the opportunity, and you will not be upset. I will do the job." I think I met with him a couple of times and discussed a couple of things, and the rest is history, because he went far beyond expectations that I had in the back of my mind. Uh, it'll be you. So I have no problem in this category, in all of them. He, his system is clear and concise. When I left, mine was on paper. It was in the computer. He has a relationship with the city, sure the mayor can attest to that, to ensure that the needs of the school system are understood, whether he gets it or not is another thing. He works with the now assistant superintendent to ensure financial accountability. I think every end-of-year report he's turned in has had no findings. Uh, Mr. Cabral, I don't know if you can answer that, but.
The first one had findings.
First one had findings? You didn't dot the I and cross the T?
I was learning. You were on vacation that week.
But, uh, and he does provide regular updates on the budget, the revolving funds, and the revolving accounts have really not been depleted since he was assistant superintendent, nor since he's been superintendent. They pretty much stayed level, and we have accomplished a lot with those revolving funds. So as far as the budget goes, I may not say too much about instruction, but as far as the budget goes, in my opinion, it far exceeds, uh, expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any further comment on budget management? Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to chime in in this area. I think Mr. Cabral has done a tremendous job, n- not only when he was, uh, finance manager, but also now as superintendent. He, he's really taken it upon himself to have more of an open discussion with the city. As I mentioned, we're going to, you know, really look, look at our net school spending agreement and, and see where we can make changes that are beneficial to both sides, and, and, and I can't say enough about his openness. Um, it, it's, sometimes it's, it's a fine line to balance between, you, you know, you pit, sometimes you're pitted in different silos, and you got the, the city side and the school side, when, when really, we're all on the same side. And I think Mr. Cabral really appreciates that, and, and I know, I certainly appreciate his efforts in those areas. It's, it's not an easy balancing act, sometimes. Um, you know, I've, I'll sometimes come in in the first or second meeting in September, and certain members will ask, "What's in the supplemental budget for us?" Is the first, and I don't want to, I don't want to put you on the spot, Mrs. Doherty, but, but, um, you know, the good news is, is I have to.
You already got it.
We, we've already done it. We've, we, we've already put it in the budget. We've been able to do that because we've had such a good relationship over the past few years, and, and the finances are better, um, that, you know, we've been able to more, more or less, the budget is the budget at this point, and if there's anything in supplemental budget at this point, it's, it's just extras, but it, it's been a great relationship between the city side and the school side, and whatever Mr. Cabral's role has been, and, and I would, I would, um, give him the highest marks in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sousa, then, Mr. Fury, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have to say, on a, on a collegial note, that was a, that was a, a nice presentation, and I, I thought, I, I feel the same way, you're, you're more intimately involved as chief executive for the city, but, uh, I certainly think that, as a committee, we've come a long way in working with you, and, and you've shared a lot of leadership in that, too, and certainly with Mr. Cabral at the helm. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make, I, I can't go any further than my, my colleague, Mr. Martin, uh, I've served on finance for quite a while, and, uh, what he said, I, I don't want to repeat it, but there's one thing I do want to, uh, mention, and that's grant funding and, and donations. I know that, um, it just seems that every year, and this, this is only really our first evaluation, or second year, but, uh, the grant funding just seems to be increasing. We, we lost a couple, but it seems like we, we're always out there fighting tooth and nail to get as much grant funding as possible for different programs, and I think that that's a strong suit, that we never, we never give up on trying to find free money, is basically the deal. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. Mr. Fury, then, Ms. Fagan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The job that Mr. Cabral has had is much different from when Mr. Martin was assistant superintendent. Mr. Martin made that job essentially. He was a mathematician and an early expert in computers, and, uh, he developed what would become the financial systems of the school department. In Mr. Cabral's case, I put it simply. The beans were there, he not only knew how to count them, he also knew where to put them. I think he's done an excellent job with accounting for everything and, and attributing everything to where it should go.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Ms. Fagan, please.
I'm glad you brought up the grants, Mr. Sousa. One of the things that concerns me about grants, and I hope we become more cognizant of it, is that a lot of times, they run out on us, and then we're left, that we don't know what to do with some program we installed. Mrs. Almeida and I were talking the other day about the issue with the sunset clause with the grants. When, when the grant goes, these things have to go, so I would hope that we're cognizant of the length of these grants, and if we're going to be able to sustain them when the money runs out, because I know a lot of times, we get in those quandaries that we just don't have the money, and what, like you said, we're looking somewhere else for it, but I hope at some point, we just reevaluate programs and see what are the most essential ones. That would be my only advice on that, but I have no issue with, um, he does a good job with the budget. I just wanted to say that, Mr. Cabral, I think you and I've had this conversation before also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fagan. Any further comments on budget management? All right, entertaining motion.
Motion that he exceeds in all areas.
Second.
Do a duel on the second. Yes, J.M., that's an E. All right, any discussion on exceeds expectations for budget management? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you. Responsibility five, professional culture. The superintendent is responsible either directly or indirectly for the hiring of all school personnel. Personnel decisions should be approached in a non-discriminatory and impartial manner. It is the superintendent's responsibility to foster an environment conducive to good teaching. The superintendent should be alert to issues that affect staff morale, should be actively concerned with a meaningful staff evaluation program, and should provide a balanced staff development program. The school committee should be kept informed of appropriate matters in collective bargaining, performance standards, professional development, and grievances. The superintendent develops and executes sound personnel procedures and practices for the district, demonstrates and promotes an atmosphere of respect for self and others, demonstrates that lifelong learning and professional development are necessary by developing and implementing an appropriate professional development plan, conducts effective staff evaluation by ensuring that all staff supervision and evaluation procedures are implemented. evaluation by ensuring that all staff supervision and evaluation procedures are implemented, encourages positive relationships and maintains open communication with stakeholders. Any members have comments on professional culture? Mr. DeMello and then Mr. Souza, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for all categories except for 5.1, he did receive exceeds expectations. For 5.1, I put proficient and maybe it's because of my lack of understanding, but my comment is as follows. It is my understanding that very talented candidates are interviewed and multiple school visits and interviews take place, yet that individual's not hired. I'd like to understand the reason or reasons why such candidate is hired at another district but not at TPS. Is there an open line of communication offered to that candidate why they were not hired? And the essence of this, of course, is we don't want a bad taste in a particular candidate because, whatever reason. So it's not a question to be answered right now, but it's a comment that I think could use a follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Ms. Souza, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, this professional culture, I think that there's a lot of areas of strength in this. And I think one particular, and you know, I could go on the whole list and labor the, all of the categories, but I think one area, a strong area is that through his admin administrative team, the job fair that they had to increase the diversity and outreach for diversity as far as all of our staff, but especially the teaching staff, I think that they've made a concerted effort to try to attract teachers across all the spectrum of have a diverse staff in our district. And I really, I really appreciate that. I think the retreats that he has for the administrative team, building a teamwork, understanding what they're going to do that year, providing the culture of how we're going to drive the district. Every, during the summertime, I think that those are a positive aspect. And grievances, collective bargaining grievances, I'm just going to go there because I am the actual chair of the Unit A Subcommittee and Mr. Cabral has a great working relationship with the teachers, the TEA president, and as well as the other five, total of six, presidents of the respective unions. And knock on wood, I haven't heard of any grievances, major grievances lately, but that working relationship helps out by keeping the lines of communication open and the culture such that we work things and we work what's best for the kids. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Ms. Doherty, please.
Thank you. So in the overall, I think that Mr. Cabral acts responsibly in an exemplary way, but I focus particularly on item number five three regarding a professional development plan. And much like the strategic plan, given that the entire leadership team is brand-new, launching their second year, that the, and we know that professional development is ongoing. Teachers participate in those professional development days. They give feedback to the leadership team about their pleasure, about the, with the PD, evaluate it accordingly and make recommendations for going forward. But we do not have a professional development plan. I noted in Mr. Cabral's, I think it was your goal statements, or maybe it was in your evaluation, that you would conduct an annual, there would be an annual audit conducted using the PD portal. It was near leadership goals. And I'm hoping that that audit of the professional development, when that is complete, comes to the school committee by way of information and that this year, we will work together with Mr. Barata to develop that professional development plan. I advocated as a member of that professional development team that we have a long-range professional development plan, a three-year plan where it would give teachers an opportunity to see what's coming along based on the direction that the district is taking. And so I'd like to see that happen again. So if the comments in that section can reflect the fact that we need to have an updated professional development plan so that we can make cogent decisions, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. And just like you referenced on expectation 2.1, we could make note of that as, you know, NA pending, still in the works. Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Mr. Martin, please.
I just want to comment on something Mr. Souza said and it's also in the description, and that is matters in collective bargaining. We have six unions and there are many systems where collective bargaining is not a pleasant experience. And granted, you may have fifteen or twenty meetings, but everyone walks away at the end of the day and they're still talking to one another. But we've also had some collective bargaining agreements that have been settled in one or two meetings. And it's the superintendent that puts the package together, so to speak, presents it to the subcommittee of the school committee, brings it to the table for negotiations. And when you settle a contract in one meeting, then obviously the superintendent has done his homework. Or in two meetings, I think, Ms. Malmeter settled in one and I think Mr. DeMello settled in two.
So the two didn't even make three.
That's an accomplishment in itself in this day and age with settling contracts. And we have contracts with six unions, as I said. And I think everyone, at the end of the day, walks away having received a fair contract. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Fagan and Mr. Fury, please.
Yeah, I, this, this one here, the professional culture, in your own description, Mr. Cabral, you wrote down the superintendent is responsible for the hiring of all school personnel and to that end, he signs every appointment letter. I would like you to be more involved with personnel, not just signing an appointment letter. You have an institutional knowledge that other people don't have. You started out as a teacher. I know you were teaching in the gifted and talented program at Paca. You were principal, you were assistant superintendent, now you are a superintendent. And there's something to be said for the institutional knowledge that you bring to this position. And I know that, I know that one thing, I don't like to go back and talk about other superintendents, but Dr. Croto used to be very proud of the fact that he talked to everybody that he hired. I don't know if that's happening, but I'd like to see more of that on, on that end. I think it would, it would help with issues. And I know something you said too, Mr. DeMello, about, I keep hearing too from staff that we've lost good people because the process takes too long and there've been good people lost that would have been a benefit to the system. So I would hope that you would pay attention to that. I'd like to see the best people here if, if we can afford them. And other than that, I, that's just my concerns. But I think for professional culture, I think you do a nice job with having programs and stuff like that. But I know there's some issue with staff morale too. I've heard that a few times too. So I, I hope we can address those. I, look, you get to pass on this as far as I'm concerned. It's your first year and you, you were left with things that you didn't expect either, like the test scores not being at the level we would have liked them at. So you had a lot on the plate, but these are just things I'd, I'd like to see that might improve some of the issues that have, I've heard complaints about from the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fagan. Mr. Fury, please.
Thank you. I've got to say, Mr. Cabral has certainly set a professional example in his own conduct and his own way of dealing with people. I also have to say, looking in some of these individual areas, you talk about sound personnel procedures and practices. From what I've seen so far, his hiring has been a lot better than a lot of other superintendents I've seen. I've been a lot happier with appointments that he has made than I have been with what's happened in other administrations. I've also got to say that being in a household with a teacher and being around other people who are teachers, they are very, even though there may not be a professional development plan in place yet, they're very happy with how professional development has been going on. I've been hearing much better things about the professional development days over the past year than I have over the previous few years. So I know that professional development, even if there's not a written plan, it's heading in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Any further comments on professional culture? Ms. Doherty, please.
Just thinking about the hiring practices and I support what my colleagues have said, I don't really, I personally don't have a clear sense of how that, how that works when we begin to look for, advertise for, when we interview, all of that kind of thing. And I know sometimes we hire a lot of people and so it's, we have a small staff and it takes a long time. We should try to take advantage of pipeline programs. For example, our Coaching for Change program has grown over the three years that we have implemented it into a potential pipeline program for attracting and keeping a more diverse teaching population with young people who are aspiring teachers who would have been working in our district and know our district. And there would be people that we know who may be quality staff, hopefully, quality staff in terms of the hiring process. So we would just want to make note that that pipeline program is really something that would be advantageous to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Ms. Malmeter, please.
I think that the staff that we have hired this year, that the superintendent hired this year, had the opportunity to meet them when they came for the new staff day, the couple of days that they were here. They all seemed so energetic, so happy. I happened to stay late for one of the sessions that they were doing and they got up and they, you know, they just did their thing. They worked together. It was ju, the collaboration was wonderful. I think that we have a wonderful, wonderful staff. And I think that a lot of that reflects back on the superintendent and the way that he addresses them, speaks to them. He doesn't speak down to anyone. He speaks to them. And he, you know, he speaks to them like they're, they're friend, you know, friends. And I think that the little jokes that he tells and those kinds of things really brought them at ease to, to feel comfortable coming to town. Meeting the school committee members that were there, meeting the administrative staff that was there, the people that did the training was wonderful. And I think that, you know, a lot of the hiring practices that we have now might be different than what we had years ago. But I think that the hiring practices are put where they belong, with the building principals have the opportunity to pick who they want for their buildings. And then it, then it comes back to central office and the superintendent approves that. And I think that's great. We need to have more school-based management because this, what's good in one school might not be good in another school. You need to have the right fit. And I think that we have the right fit in our schools. If you walk into the school buildings, the staff all seem to be cohesive. They all get along and they seem happy. Not that I go into a lot of schools, but I have gone into schools and I've seen how happy the staff is. It flows down into the classroom and that, to me, creates the culture that I want because I want all the students to be happy and the staff to be happy. And I think that last year and this year, I've seen the difference in some of the buildings and I attribute that to Mr. Cabral's leadership and how he wants the culture of every building to go. So I think that he exceeds in those areas and I think he does a great job. And I would make a motion that he exceeds in the areas.
Second.
Okay. A motion to give exceeds expectations for professional culture, seconded by Mr. Souza. Any further discussion on the motion, please? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Another E. All right. And the last item on responsibilities is family, community partnerships. Public awareness is the cornerstone for supportive education in our community. The superintendent should ensure that staff, students, parents, and the community are kept informed of the mission and the accomplishments of the school system. A strong, positive posture is needed in building public support for the school system. His expectations: maintains community respect and support for the school system and aggressively supports school system improvement. Encourages practical and community involvement on all aspects of the school system. Develops a cooperative relationship with all of the news media. Engages in family and community outreach, actively listens to concerns, and is accessible to staff, parents, and members of the school community. Works on developing positive relationships with staff and students by being visible in the community and in the district schools. Mr. DeMello, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for all categories except for 6.3, he received a exceeds expectations. But on 6.3, develops a cooperative relationship with all the news media, I put proficient. The reason being, as I wrote, I very much appreciate the superintendent's willingness to belong to many community clubs, associations, and other nonprofit entities. Visibility is important to the greater community of Southeastern Massachusetts, not only time. Communication to media outlets is key. They need to be informed of all the positives in our school district, whether in the arts, academically, clubs, athletics, and any other item worthy of news. And when I mention news media outlets, because we have such a diverse population, we need to communicate to other media outlets that have different language readers. For example, the Spanish community and the Portuguese community. There are still many folks that don't comprehend the English language and we have many weekly periodicals such as the O Jornal, the Portuguese Times, and many radio stations, whether it's Spanish or Portuguese, that could expand upon the positives. Because when there's a negative, everybody gets a hold of it. But when there's a positive, they don't seem to get the communication. So that's my only recommendation and why I marked a proficient and I hopefully that you will work towards expanding that outlet coverage for the students we serve and the parents we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mr. Souza, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is a broad category. There's a, there's a lot of different things I could touch upon, but I'll touch upon a couple, and that is the expansion of our family welcome center to include Manette. I think that's a huge, huge asset, especially people, people could come down there, get a lot of information, including talking to someone from Manette. I think, I think that's, that's a huge asset. The superintendent, his use of social, social media, specifically Twitter, I think that Twitter's a great tool to help show the community what's going on in the schools. I know he encourages the building principals to use it, encourages the staff to use it. A quick story, we had our school committee retreat and we used those little robots. What were those things?
Gizmo bots.
What is it?
The Gizmo bots. Gizmo.
Oh, the, so... The bots. The bots. So I, during the, during the retreat, I tweeted that we were using the bots and linked it to the school system. No sooner did I did that, about a half an hour later, the company that makes the bots that we were using liked it and retweeted it. So it just goes to show the power of Twitter. Yeah, it was free advertisement because we were using it for the eight thousand student school, school district. But it just goes to show one positive thing and how the use of that shows parents, the community, the area, what's going on in the system. So there's a lot of, and I totally agree with my colleague across the street here. There's a lot of, when the negative comes out, that's all we hear about. But there's, the positives certainly outweigh the negatives. And so there's different, how should I put it? Different things that the superintendent's done, but his use, specific use of social media, especially Twitter, I think helps out with the positive, positive aspect of our district. And again, I'm glad to see he's using the parent university. That was started in the previous administration and I was a big fan of that. And every year it expands, it gets bigger and bigger. I was happy to be away and I couldn't go to this past years, but I'm glad to see we're continuing that trend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Mr. Martin, please.
Something that isn't mentioned in this particular responsibility, which consumes an enormous amount of time of Mr. Cabral, and I think it has to do with building public support for our school system, is security. support for our school system, is security. Now, he mentioned at the last meeting as to, he had a list of items that we have accomplished. And he also mentioned that he goes to meetings, whether it's MASS or urban districts, and we far exceed what is going on in other school systems. It's a sensitive issue, but I think the public knows that we are doing, the school system is doing through Mr. Cabral, everything humanly possible to ensure that their students are safe and secure in our buildings. And I know he has a great relationship with the EMTs, the fire department, the police department, not only through the SROs, but through training and everything that's going on, you know, behind the scenes, so to speak. And it isn't mentioned in any of the, you know, maybe the document needs to be updated because security is not, the word security is not mentioned in any of these expectations or descriptions. But I think it, it does, it's important, and it does take a lot of his time to ensure that the good things are going on in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Almeida, please.
Thank you. One area I know that he totally exceeds in is his positive relationship with staff and students, and he's visible in the schools and within the community. I can attest to that. Some of the things that Mr. Cabral has done is above and beyond, and I don't think any other superintendent has done some of the things he's done. Like he's pretended to be a student for the day, which I think was great.
He didn't get away with it.
And he got away with it. And he's, you know, ridden the school buses, which I don't think other superintendents, that I can recall, none of them have ridden school buses. He's, here we are, not even like a week into school, and he's visited every school and gone into all the classrooms. I know last year at Christmas time, when they had Polar Express, Mr. Cabral was over at Ready School, and he took on the challenge to come to school in his PJs so the little kids could see him. And that was something not many superintendents would do.
Yeah, nobody tweeted that, huh?
I have a picture if you wanna see it. And, you know, that really kinda brought the staff, they all came running to see Mr. Cabral. Some of them didn't even recognize him. But I can attest to him doing those kinds of things. And I, and I know that he goes to different things within the community, and he, he's always talking to people. People have admiration for him within the community, and it's his community. I mean, he lives here too, so I mean, and that makes a big difference. So I think that he's done a very great job in that whole area in building community partnerships with parents when he goes to PTO meetings. He's certainly at the student advisory, the high school advisories. You know, he's really down-to-earth with the students there and talks to them and listens to them, and some of the things that they wanted have been readily implemented. He, he's very engaging with the students and, and very engaging with the staff, and I think he does a great job in that whole area. So I don't think there's any way, way, other than maybe getting a little more media for the school department. But again, I don't think that the, because that does, like they used to have, every week, they'd have a school page. I don't think they do that anymore because it's not, it's not tight anymore, it's not published here like it was published before. So it's a little bit different trying to get that presentation. But I find that he exceeds in these areas also.
Thank you, Ms. Almeida. Ms. Doherty, please.
So just briefly, I'm a very strong advocate for community involvement, and I think that the superintendent and I are on the same page. The more voices that are heard in areas that are essential to our thinking about policy, for example, so budget forums, homework policy forum, parent university, as Mr. Souza pointed out, the community involvement teams to, for social-emotional learning, for example, where a broad range of teachers and community people are participating in those conversations. And input at the, across the district and at the school level to the work that we are responsible for, and, and the superintendent is responsible for, is really, really critical. I believe that the more voices that are heard, the better strengthened our policy and direction. And Mr. Souza's word, whatever is trending from the parent point of view. I like that. That's good. So I think exemplary, so I think 62 and 64 overlap, and both of them speaking to community involvement and our outreach, superintendent's outreach to the community in that regard.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Any further items on family, community partnerships, or Mr. Cabral challenging Mayor Hoy to a field goal challenge? Timmy DiMartino videoing it, and I'll volunteer the whole. You can throw the discus for the tiebreaker. Sorry, I had to add some humor, it's, it's all past my bedtime. Mr. Souza, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that's, I think what the, my colleague, Mrs. Almeida, needs to add to the written record would be Mr. Cabral trying out for the football team against a defensive tackle, and him going up against a, a high school kid. That was, that was a good match. Of course, the kid was about three times the size of him, but it, you know, Mr. Cabral would never ask anyone to do anything he wouldn't do himself, and that's, I think that's part of his strength and part of his leadership. And he, he was out there with the, with the football team and, and talking to the kids, and they put him right in the, right in the offensive line, and I didn't see the kid, the defensive kid put him to the ground, but they got a good, they had a good tussle. That's all I'll say. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the responsibility number six, family and community partnerships, exceeds expectations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, the motion is to give an exceeds expectations to family, community partnerships. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. That ends the evaluation of superintendent, myself and Secretary Almeida, as well as Secretary Devine. Thank you, Mr. DeMello. We will compile our notes, and the next meeting, we will report out publicly to all of you. We'll make, we'll make every effort to have it in the packet before the next meeting to get a chance to take a look. Mr. Souza, please.
Just to review the process, you're gonna, you're gonna collate this and make one document?
Yes.
And give it to us?
Yes, prior to the meeting, yes.
Prior to the meeting, and then we'll review, and then we'll vote on it, or change it, amend it, or whatever.
Except the field goal part, we'll wait until after.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Having been, having been in your seat, I started an easy job, and I can attest to that, Mr., my colleague to my left has been there a couple of times. So certainly that's, I look forward to the, to the final document. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Mr. DeMello, please.
So the written testimony or document I had, could Mr. Cabral please get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, and before I, hand the microphone over to Mr. Superintendent Cabral, I just wanna thank all of you, as one of the scorebook keepers or whatever, note-takers, I will give you credit, in the fourteen years I've been with all of you, that was really, really positive feedback. The criticisms were actually very positive. They were very well thought out, and they were sensible in that they were critiques on census for improvement rather than purely saying, "That's not the way I wanna do it." And as one member and as someone keeping score, I appreciated that. It's gonna make, I believe, our job a lot simpler in compiling a group observation. Even though he got all ease, if you will, there was a lot of very valuable feedback, and I anticipate Superintendent Cabral using that to improve his performance in the upcoming year when he has his full, full first year around the corner. Mr. Cabral, Superintendent Cabral.
I just, sorry, I just wanna say I'm, I'm honored, I'm also very humbled by the comments, and I'm extremely, extremely motivated based on the information that you shared with me this evening to continue working hard for the betterment of our students in the Taunton Public Schools and the city of Taunton. So thank you for the positive feedback.
Okay, is it, motion to adjourn the meeting? Is that so, I, made by, I?
Oh, some votes. Whatever.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.